I have six o'clock. I would like to welcome everyone to the September fourteenth meeting of the New Bern Board of Aldermen. Tonight, the prayer will be given by Alderman Astor, Bobby Astor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to call up Vince Bryan, please. Vince is a city employee. He's been working with the city for twenty-six years and seventeen years as a very important position of animal control officer. Vince, would you please lead us in prayer?
Yes, I will. Later, we'll bow our head and let us pray. Father God, in the name of your son Christ Jesus, we thank you for this moment in time, Lord. We thank you for this day. It was the day that you made him. We're going to be grateful. We're glad. Father, come on, on behalf of the Board of Aldermen, the mayor, and the city manager, and the attorneys of this city, this great city, and everyone who worked for this great city. And Father, I just ask you, Lord, to lead them and guide them in every decision they've made, Father, and let them learn, Father God, just to come in reason together. Father, I'm asking right now to just move upon the police department, the fire department, and all the other departments, and the one that's over them, God. Have your way with them, Lord. Just continue to bless them and their families, oh, Father. And Father, I see the room is full of people, God, that have decisions that they want to be made and ideas that they have on their mind, Father. So I'm just asking you, God, to give them the patience, oh, Father God, to work with these Aldermen and the mayor concerning these ideas that they have, Father. Let them not give up. Let them be patient, God. Let them continue to strike the ground. This, I pray in your son Christ Jesus. For thy name, the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of our country. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ambassador, would you call the robe?
Alderman Bingle, here. Alderwoman Harris.
Present.
Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Bess.
Present.
Alderman Odom.
Here.
Before we get going, I would like to welcome the Beach Grove Boy Scout Troop, Beach Grove Methodist Church. And Joe, if you guys would come up and tell us who you are, get the scouts to introduce themselves, please speak up into the microphone, tell us what you're working on. You're gonna get a public speaking badge tonight.
We are the scouts of Unit ninety-seven.
Can't hear you. Pick it up.
We are the scouts of Unit ninety-seven.
Okay, great.
My name is Terrence Jones and I'm scout with Unit ninety-seven.
My name is Adnai.
My name's Tyler.
And I'm Eric.
And we, Mr. Hartsel, you guys come on up and introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about what's going on. I know that one of my best friend's son is an Eagle Scout, Matthew Parker, and so we're real proud of what the leadership of Beach Grove Methodist Church has done for scouting in the New Bern area.
Well, thank you. My name's Danny Hartsel, scout master of Troop ninety-seven, and we started this troop in nineteen eighty-one.
How long have you been scout master since eighty?
Forty years.
Wow.
And I've been working with Danny forty years, and that's why I have no hair.
I know what you're talking about.
And also, I've been working with Hugh Farrell, so that doesn't help either.
Good evening. I'm Joe Hoffman. I'm the also scout master for Pac ninety-seven, been there for about five years now. We're, hopefully, we're growing more, but thank you for coming.
My name's Tim McKenzie. I have not been here as long as these, about ten years for me, but again, assistant scout master here at Troop ninety-seven. Had a chance to come up here a few times in the past with groups of scouts, and it's been a great opportunity for them. What they're working on is citizenship in the community, merit badge is what they're working on. And again, they actually have three different levels of citizenship that they focus on. One is in the community, step it up a level to one's citizenship in the nation, then citizenship in the world. So this has been a great opportunity in the past for the boys to come and get a sense for how does a town, a city, a community, how do they function, how they operate, how do things get done? So that's what they hope to take away from this, is again, seeing the function, see how things get done in a community. We'll turn around and take what we talked about, what you talked about today, and discuss in a little bit more detail, at least at our level, detail tomorrow at our actual, our weekly scout meetings. But again, boys from the troop, and again, working their way on up, second class, first class scouts, for the most part, working their way on up towards that Eagle rank.
And are you guys having your barbecue this fall?
I try to hold, man, we can't.
Okay. They always have a good barbecue out there. And thanks for coming, coming out and providing leadership for our U. At this time, the requests and petitions of citizens.
Does she have another scout report?
Yeah, there's another scout report written on the top of your paper. Two nineteen.
Go ahead. Ambassador, what?
There's written on top of your paper.
Go ahead.
The quote two nineteen is also in attendance.
Okay, and can we hear from them? I didn't, I didn't, come on up, come on up. Now, we, I thought you were the same group, but please come up and introduce yourself.
This is all good.
This is true, this is all good. Welcome to the New Bern Board of Aldermen meeting. Any other requests and petitions of citizens? Ambassador, no?
Yes.
Yes. Didn't mean to miss anybody out there. First one, let's see, we're gonna, Sabrina, I think the first one was Father Tully, but he's.
We'll wait and do that.
Right, right.
Sure.
And James Woods, is James here?
James Owens, Jr., nineteen zero-three Country Club robe. It's amazing that the scouts are here about governing, and I was just sitting there back there thinking about what I had to say today. I've come before this board this year asking for, to be a part of two things. The first one, and the main one I'm concerned about, was the selection of the city manager's position. I don't have anything against Mr. Foster Hughes. I think he'll be a good city manager. However, governing takes two parts. It takes the citizens, and it takes you all. And it seems to me like all the important decisions that this board makes that affects us as citizens, you guys make it behind closed doors or without input from us. Transparency, I keep hearing that word thrown around, and you guys aren't being transparent. If the process is not in place for me to participate, I didn't have a problem with that. All somebody had to do was pick up the phone and tell me that. But for me to hear it in the streets that Mr. Hughes has been selected as the city manager, I thought is a disservice to every citizen and myself. I don't have a problem with Foster. I work with Foster. I think he'll be an outstanding city manager. However, I asked to be a part of that board for a reason, because when I look around in this room, I see no one in a leadership position except for one that looks like me. One. One. And apparently, words that you guys say to us as citizens of New Bern don't mean anything. That's how I take it. Maybe I could be wrong. I would like in the future that we work together. This is a partnership. My father always told me, actions speak louder than words, and your actions have spoken very loud to the citizens, especially citizens that look like me in the city of New Bern. Thank you.
Mr. Woods, Mr. Woods, excuse me. I just want to say this. I apologize to you because you are correct. I should have picked up the phone and contacted you whether you were going to be a part of the process or not, to inform you of what was going on. You're right, you are a taxpayer and citizen, and you should have that right. I just want to, to let you know how I feel about the process.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, our next petition is from Chris Stewart. Oh, I'm sorry, it's Curtis, I'm sorry.
Curtis with a K.
I got you.
I'll try to use my inside voice tonight. I just want to bring a couple of points that I think are still some misunderstanding in our community. The Board of Aldermen unanimously voted to purchase property, and all of you guys voted for it. The Board of Aldermen changed the scope of work with FEMA, and all of you guys voted for it. And just last week, the Board of Aldermen decided that they were going to move Stanley White to the new location that FEMA approved, and all of you guys voted for it. There has been so much confusion and foolishness in our community based on what my original conversation was at the meeting, as the Omega said there a couple of weeks ago, on the leadership. I am very disturbed that folks that caused these issues still turned around and voted for the same thing that everybody else did. If there was an issue with that, I think people should have stood their ground and just not voted for it at all. It seems that you guys had the votes to carry it, to do what you wanted to do, and to me, that was a time for folks to use their position to bring our community closer together, because there has been a distrust for years in New Bern. There's still some rumor around that, but the facts of the matter is the facts of the matter. Please go pull the record for anyone that's listening to me, because the people that's in front of us, everybody voted for it. My second thing that I want to talk about is there seems to be a lot of petty differences amongst this board with people in our community. We, a group of us from the People's Assembly, approached the leadership to get on the agenda here to talk about something that Mr. Woods just talked about, which was inclusion of African-Americans in the hiring process, whether that is from a standpoint of people not being qualified, or we just don't have the applicants that are African-American to submit. Unfortunately, because of petty differences, our leadership chose not to bring that to you guys. The person that everybody attacks me about happens to be a good friend of mine, Sabrina. Antoinette Baskey from the People's Assembly had to approach her to have a meeting with you and the mayor to engage in this conversation. We appreciate that. I stand before you to say, I'm not about a popular choice. People can be mad at me. This isn't personal. The black community needs new leadership. Our leadership is not good. We're not getting things done in the black community, and everybody's pointing their finger at everybody else. But at the end of the day, the people and the powers that be, that was a perfect opportunity for us to work together, even if you don't like somebody. I don't like Antoinette sometimes. Gets on my nerves, but I'll work with her because it's for the common good for our people. Unfortunately, that didn't happen in this case. The last thing I'll say is, I opened up a restaurant about six months ago. I just want to thank Sabrina, the mayor, and Oden for coming. I bought that building, cash. It's my building. It's my restaurant, Broad Street Takeout. I appreciate it. I appreciate you guys coming. I wish others would have attended. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our last petition is Mac Fly.
I'm Mac Fly. Most of you know me. I opened up a bicycle shop in nineteen seventy-seven here. Got wiped out first week in business, but I bounced back. I've had multiple break-ins since then. I bounced back. We donate a lot of money to charities, raise money for charities, police department, schools, bicycles, all this stuff. All right. Now I want something back to me, okay? I complained about this creek next to my shop. I even wrote a letter to Mayor Kimball forty years ago, telling him about all the buildings going upstream that's going to start washing out the ditch bank. Well, it's, it's gradually deteriorated over the years. Well, with all this increased water going in it now, it's gotten even worse. And then they came and cleaned out the ditch. They backed the other side, and the bank collapsed. They put that back. I noticed across the street at Chuck Tyson's parking lot over there, his is caving in there. So I've been trying to get, and George Childs and Foster Hughes have been great. They've been contacting me and working with me on this, and I really appreciate it. But what I need, my whole ditch bank, I had to raise one of my air condition hanging on the wall of the building. It's a crack all the way down and splitting and going down. They had the engineers look at it. They said it was a drainage from the roof. I had my engineers look at it, which was Joe Avalos. I also had Marine contractor Dan Foley look at it. They said that's not where it came from. It's from the work done in the ditch itself that's caused it. This whole thing's collapsing. I got another air condition unit that's, I've got propped up right now. I just feel that to keep on with me, working with the community, that they can help me a little bit this time around. This is too big for me to handle by myself. I can handle the break-ins and all that mess, and I can recover from it. But this, I've got to have some help on this. That's all I can say. I appreciate any help anybody can give. It's literally falling in the creek. When it falls in the creek, it's going to clog it up, it's going to back up water. That's another thing.
Thank you.
Thank you, your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, that's all the petitions at this time, and we now can go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
Well, I'd like to just amend that, if you don't mind, and pull the proclamation memorializing Sister Angela Mary Parker to be separate from the consent agenda.
Mayor, I would like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda, pulling item four from the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See and none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. Alderman Bingle, because of your vast knowledge of what Sister Parker did, along with Ebenezer Baptist Presbyterian Church and the whole history of RCS, I appreciate if you could take it from here.
It's really an honor for me this evening to speak about Sister Angela Mary Parker. I am sorry that Father Tully hasn't gotten here, because he did know Sister Angela Mary as well as Reverend Johnson from the Ebenezer Church who approached the mayor and I about this proclamation. It was Sister Angela Mary and Reverend Johnson who together formed Religious Community Services in the basement of Ebenezer Church. And their, their, their dream was to bring area churches together to feed the hungry and to start services for people in need, people in the community. So they worked, they built it, and because of the success of RCS, they, in nineteen, I believe it was nineteen eighty-six, the city of New Bern was awarded the All-American City. And it was really based on the strength of what RCS had done in this community. I actually traveled to Chicago with Sister Angela Mary and Reverend Johnson, and at the time, my mother-in-law Ella Bingle was the mayor of New Bern, and we went, many citizens, and celebrated this wonderful accomplishment of being named an All-American City. But Sister Angela Mary was an Immaculate Heart sister, and taught school, was here at St. Paul's, and ended up going back to Scranton, where the, for Catholics, they would know the mother house, and of the IMH sisters. And she died, I believe it was in two thousand and fourteen, she passed away. So I would just like to briefly, Mayor, if you don't mind, just read this proclamation. And Reverend Johnson personally asked that I do this this evening, so please just bear with me. Whereas Sister Angela Mary Parker entered the Immaculate Heart of Mary congregation on September seventh, nineteen fifty-three, at the age of twenty-five, and made her temporary profession of vows on August third, nineteen fifty-six, and her final profession of vows on August fourth, nineteen fifty-nine. And whereas Sister Angela Mary was a gentle, patient, and determined person, she taught at five schools, including St. Paul Elementary School here in New Bern from nineteen seventy-eight to nineteen eighty-four. And whereas, she also contributed to New Bern in many other ways, most notably in her position as the Director of Religious Community Service Soup Kitchen from nineteen eighty-four to nineteen ninety-two. And whereas, after a diligent but unsuccessful search for a suitable location for the soup kitchen, Sister Angela Mary reached out to Reverend Robert Johnson of Ebenezer Baptist, Ebenezer, excuse me, Presbyterian Church. Reverend Johnson and his congregation were receptive to the idea and shared Sister Angela Mary's enthusiasm for serving the needs of the community. And whereas, after renovating the kitchen and dining area of Ebenezer Presbyterian Church, RCS Soup Kitchen began operation on November fifth, nineteen eighty-four, and remained at the church for ten months until the kitchen was moved to its permanent location at five oh-three Guion Street on August fifteenth, nineteen eighty-five. And whereas, Sister Angela Mary's impact on the citizens of New Bern is still felt today, as her legacy of displaying love and serving others continues to live on through the soup kitchen that continues to feed so many in need. And Mayor, thank you for signing this and doing this. I appreciate it. And I know Reverend Johnson, Father Tully, and all those that have been impacted by RCS. And I thought it was very appropriate and fitting that this evening we will vote to finally deed that building where our, where the soup kitchen started to RCS, so that they continue their wonderful mission in helping our community. So thank you to the citizens. Thank you to this board for allowing me to do this. It was quite an honor for me. Thank you, Mayor.
And Alderman Bingle, would you like to put that in form of a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, we approve the proclamation memorializing Sister Angela Mary Parker.
Motion and second. Seeing that we have motion and second, no discussion, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Bess.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Motion carries. That's the end of the consent agenda. Let's go to item number eleven.
Mayor, next item is to consider an ordinance amending Article Five, Recruitment and Employment of Chapter Fifty-four Personnel. This amendment provides an exception to the existing ordinance regarding employees serving in a part-time or seasonal capacity. The amendment ensures a process that prevents any supervisory authority or influence over an immediate family member, including involvement in a disciplinary action or termination appeal. Additional information is being provided by Ms. Hayes, and happy to answer any questions you may have.
Mayor, I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance amending Article Five, Recruitment and Employment of Chapter Fifty-four Personnel.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? See and none. Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Bess.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number twelve.
Next item is to consider a resolution approving an employment contract between the city of New Bern and Richard Foster Hughes II. At the August twenty-fourth meeting, a motion was made and passed to hire myself as the permanent city manager effective September fourteenth, and subject to a mutually agreeable contract. The proposed resolution approves an employment contract between the city and myself.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving an employment agreement between the city of New Bern and Richard Foster Hughes II. Second. Motion and second, is there discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
No.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Alderman Bess.
Yes.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Okay, congratulations then. We appreciate what you're doing, and we appreciate all your hard work through the last couple of years. When did you officially come and work with the city?
I came mid-November of twenty seventeen. Yes, and I planned, planned time, so.
Okay, thank you. Let's go to item number thirteen.
Next item is to administer the edict.
Okay, if you'll raise your right hand, place your left on the Bible. I, Richard Foster Hughes II, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, so help me God.
I will.
I, Richard Foster Hughes II, do solemnly swear that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States and the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as city manager, so help me God.
I will.
I, Richard Foster Hughes II, do solemnly and sincerely swear that I will be faithful and bear true allegiance to the state of North Carolina and to the constitutional powers and authorities which are, or may be, established for the government thereof, and that I will endeavor to support, maintain, and defend the Constitution of said state, not inconsistent with the Constitution of the United States, to the best of my knowledge and ability, so help me God.
I will, so help me God.
You are ours.
Yes, for the first time in my life, I've, she's been.
Ben White Foster?
He's in our way.
She has been extremely supportive to me during my career, and I appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Okay, let's go to item number fourteen.
Next item is to consider a budget ordinance amendment. At the August twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one meeting, the board also voted to seek a candidate to fill the position of assistant city manager. The budget ordinance will appropriate one hundred and thirty-seven thousand, three hundred eighty-six dollars from fund balance for the salary and benefits associated with the position. Additionally, the amendment makes appropriations necessary to re-establish encumbrances for outstanding purchase orders as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, and to allocate three hundred thousand from the Pleasant Hill Community Center building. A memo from Ms. Ostrom is attached. Ms. Ostrom is not here this evening. She is, is, is remote, and our senior accounting, accountant, Tanya Harms, is here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Okay.
I have a question.
You have a question? Go ahead. Yes, I think Alderman, Alderman Harris.
Did you have a question?
No, I was going to make a motion.
Oh, okay, yeah. In regards to the assistant city manager, how is that process going to happen in regards to the hiring process? Is it going to be put out for people to apply for?
So we are going to follow the, our hiring process that's established.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, if there's any more questions, I would like to make a motion to adopt the budget ordinance amendment to fiscal year twenty twenty-two operating budget.
Second.
Motion and second, is there discussion? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom.
Yes.
Alderman Bess.
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey.
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw.
Yes.
Alderman Astor.
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris.
Yes.
Alderman Bingle.
Yes.
Motion carries. Item number fifteen.
At this time, we're going to ask our GIS coordinator, Alice Wilson, to make a presentation
Thank you.
Are these come on?
I will preface it to say that my daughter moved back to New Bern last night with three cats, so my allergies are working overtime right now, so hopefully while I will get to this presentation. And I would also like to invite the scouts, if they would like to learn more about GIS and math, I'm willing to help. So talking about redistricting, there's two general statutes that require that local governments, after a census is completed, to look at their ward boundaries or their districts and see if they're out of, out of proportion, and if so, then they need to adjust those boundaries. Kind of the procedures, there's no real procedures for cities, per se. The counties have different criteria, but once the districts or the wards in our case are determined, the city will adopt those wards, either by the ordinance or a resolution based on what we did last time, and last time in two thousand and eleven, or two thousand and twelve, actually, we adopted a resolution, so we would need to do that again. Then the maps will be made, made public, and then we'll meet with the board selections and provide information and data to them to notify voters of the changes. So looking at the data in itself, this has been a crazy year, obviously with COVID. We usually get the data in by March, but we didn't get it in until August the twelfth. Had help with the IT department, Tony Gatlin helped us to turn it around using some other tools to access the data, because it was in a strange format, but they're saying in the twenty twenty- the twenty, twenty census that we had thirty-one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one people, and you can see that we had a demographic shift in population. I will say, part of that is due to the census, the way it's filled out, how you choose what your, your, your racial background is and your demographic background. So, looking at, a little closer for this census, you can look at the population, you can see there's some other population that's kind of new, and then there's two or more population, there's actually categories for three or more, four or more, five or more population, now I just combine those together into one. So, things to consider when redistricting, you don't want to make all wards equally, necessarily, because all wards don't grow equally. We do wanna stay under the ten percent deviation rule, we also wanna look at making sure that the ward boundaries are easy to distinguish and identify, and if out possible, keep neighborhoods together and use them as boundaries as possible, and also make sure to consider African-American blocks. So, looking at our data, again, we extracted the data, you're supposed to take the most populous ward, the most, least populous ward, look at the difference between the optimum population and optimum population, if you take the total population divided by our six wards, and that comes out to fifty-two hundred and fifteen roughly, and so you can see Ward one and Ward three are out of, out of, out of whack, and if you add that percentage-wise, if it's over ten percent, you're, you need to look at redistricting, and so ours came at over fifty-two percent. So, again, looking at growth, we talked about this at the workshop, work session, we kinda looked at the wards where we're seeing growth, you can see the little dots are where we had building permits for new housing units and, or multiple-family housing units, and you can see, again, it's not, some wards are growing faster than others. So, just looking at a general adjustment, we had some discussions since the work session, on the left-hand side is the current ward boundaries, and on the right hand, possible adjustments based on discussions, again, looking at growth, looking at clearly defined boundaries, and looking at combining, keeping neighborhoods into one ward. So, I'll just kinda, I wanna preface this, but say this is just kind of a, a rough draft, it's not the final plan, that by no means. But looking at the adjustments, so ward, one of the biggest adjustments, or one of the biggest areas, I should say, Ward three is probably gonna be all in Township Seven, if you look at it, on the right-hand side, you can see the area that's highlighted blue. So, we have to move those areas into new wards, and so we're proposing in that area, the Old Town area, the Gant area, and Trent Park area, moving that into Ward one. The remainder of that Ward three area, which is Burn, without the E, sorry about that type of, Burn Village, Trent Park area, and Tryon Estate Department, moving that into Ward two, giving that well-defined area of Trent Road, Seven Streets, and MLK Boulevard. Then we noticed, from the last census, there was like this one little neighborhood area that kinda got split up and put into Ward four, pulling that into Ward two, which is surrounded by. And then, we had, and looking at the data, Ward six was over, so we needed to take some population, again, clearly defining the boundaries, we were gonna use Highway seventy and pull Ward six to the south and west of Ward, of Highway seventy. So, where to put those two areas, so the Burn Village, we're proposing to put into Ward four, and then again, on Highway fifty-five, there was some area that kind of jut, jutted out next to the hospital, kind of cleaning up that neighborhood split and putting it into Ward five. Again, clearly defining the area, and Ward four was another area that grew rapidly and had overpopulation, using News Boulevard as a defining boundary, and moving what is currently on the north side of News Boulevard into Ward five and taking it out of Ward Same sort, so we've talked about Ward six, this is that other piece, the, it splits up the Village of the Woods community, combining that all into Ward two. And then these are areas, again, trying to give Ward one, which was significantly less population, trying to figure out where to pick up population, and again, defining a clear area, using kind of the Sunnyside, Cleveland Park, National Court area, pulling that into Ward one, all the way up to Jack Smith Creek area and the railroad. So, that would give also, pulling neighborhoods for Ward five into, from Ward one into Ward five. And that included the Payden Town area, down to Cedar Street, west, from Chapman Street to West Street. And then there's this one little pocket that was kind of jutting out, which is just to the east of Craven Terrace Apartments, we were just proposing to put that into Ward two to clarify that, that area, so that citizens would not be confused of what ward they were actually in. And that's, again, just looking at the numbers on the top, you can see the numbers that are currently have, and just based on what we were looking at, this would get us under the ten percent rule. And again, this is just a, a rough draft, so I'm certainly open to any questions that I can answer.
Alderman Harris?
Yes, um, can you take the slide back a couple? So, the first one is ten, is that putting Roundtree in my ward, the full side of it?
Say that, I'm sorry.
So, on ten, the next side over.
Ten, okay.
So, that's giving me, that's putting Roundtree all the way, all that onto my side, that's what you're saying, Cedar and Broad, Roundtree?
Correct, that area between Cedar Street to Broad Street, and then east to west would be Roundtree to West Street.
Okay, and then my other question was, uh, over what was transferred from me to Ward five?
Oh, that area next to the hospital?
Yes.
Yeah, again, I was just trying to clarify the boundary, because there was like a little shut area, right here. So, the hospital is actually, they're looking at site plans for the hospital, and they're kind of looking how they're growing and stuff, kind of define that Ward five boundary would go up to the hospital, and your boundary would come up to, include the hospital, and where their growth, its potential to grow.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
Alice, my only question that I had, and I'm in Harris, we didn't have a chance to have that meeting that day, was the Trolley Run neighborhood, so when they split up three, you know, because Trolley Run is really considered part of Gant, it's just a little development outside that, kinda split it there, so if you'll go, yeah, right there, see, it's Spencer and Ren, and that's, that's all Trolley Run, isn't it, back in there?
Trolley Run is actually like.
Okay, that's what I was looking for, Trolley, Trolley Run, because I think that was not, unless we changed that, remember we had that discussion? Oh, yeah, you see where?
Yeah, this is kind of a big scale, and I would say our online, I know the manager had asked for us to pull up stuff, five minutes till five, I found out that our online maps had gone down, so, bad timing, but, uh, we could certainly, Trolley Run is actually where Avenue first.
Trolley runs at the end of, like, Park and, yeah, so it would be like the Trent, so that, where's, where it's Trent Road, okay, you may have included it, Spencer ran into that then?
Yeah.
I know we talked about that, but we didn't wanna move anything that may or may not be in your ward, so I just wanted to make sure, 'cause I just feel like that would be contiguous.
So, I inherited Alderman Astor's.
Correct.
Stuff just over here.
Over here, and then, so they like split it Trent Road, so you got that way.
Okay.
And then Trolley Run and that, all of this came into the first.
Do you want to see the map?
Is that the upstate?
How do I get to you?
Well, this is the old one, this is the, the current, the current.
That's current.
Okay.
And it should be in the Spencer Avenue.
Yeah.
Because they, they have their meetings together and.
Mm-hmm, so the Neighborhood Association.
We could certainly take a look at that.
Yeah, I just wanna, I would think that should be contiguous and, and part of the whole.
We could look at the numbers and, and see what that looks like.
So, you, you try, you wanna take something from there into one?
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm confused on that map, when she looks at the big map to show Trolley Run, that's, that's the only thing, trying to keep that as part of the Gant area.
Okay.
Yeah, I think we're looking at, maybe Ward one go all the way up to Seven Street and Trent Road.
I was just about to say, it would make sense to take this part, whatever this road is, and then let me keep that.
And it, it, it may be, I don't know what the population numbers do, that's why she needs to, when Barbara and I were there that day, basically, as she moved lines, have said, okay, you now have this many people, you have that many people, and it determined which way we went, correct, Alice? That's how we kind of work it.
Correct, yes, we were looking at numbers, and so, like I said, if you, I can get to it, um, if you look at the numbers, these are the numbers that we get, and you can see we're, they're not perfect, but you don't wanna be perfect, because wards don't grow the same.
Right.
Um, so, this pretty well gets us pretty close, I mean, it's not to say we can't tweak here or there, but I think this clearly defines areas that make them easy to understand, and it gives us the numbers, racial breakdown, and, but again, this is, you know, a rough draft, and we can certainly make adjustments as needed.
I have one more question.
Alice, or Mr. Hughes' timelines here, we do have certain, I wouldn't call it urgency, but we do have to, we want with this, don't we? Mr. Davis?
Yes, sir, we, we, the, the statute that pushes the election into next year requires that we have at least one public hearing, and I know this floor is gonna have one at anywhere, anyway. My suggestion would be to have that public hearing sooner rather than later, in the event that during that public hearing, you hear something that causes us to require additional discussions. So, if, if we think that we are close at this point, we can have a public hearing at the next regular board meeting. I know there's a discussion to be had, it sounds like, between Ward one and two, I've not heard anyone else comment to know if there are other discussions to be had, but if we're down to a few streets, then it may be possible to have the public hearing. I just wanna make sure that the public has a good map a week or so before the public hearing, so that everyone can think about it, talk about it, and we can have a productive public hearing.
When you do a public hearing, though, I thought, don't we have to add a meeting call for a public hearing to the next meeting, or we don't have?
We can do that now, I, I do that just for transparency, but here we are talking about it on TV, which is the most transparent.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're following.
Yes, ma'am.
But I think we could have it at the next meeting, do you feel?
We can also make big maps available, you know, Development Services and City Hall, or wherever you deem necessary, we can make them available, so some of the community centers as well, sorry to interrupt.
No, it's not, Alderman Odom?
Alice, the only question I had is the column that says percent of deviation, if I'm looking at that correctly, Ward one, three, and five are slated to be below whatever that standard deviation would be, and then two, four, and six would be over. My only concern with that is, obviously, there's a lot of growth that's getting ready to happen in Ward four, with the apartments and the houses with D.R. Horton announcement, Bell Oaks is already permitted for Ward six, so that's my only concern, we, with Alderman Astor at Ward being below, that makes sense, because we know that there's gonna be more growth out that way, that's my only concern, is there a, a concern on behalf of staff and, and council that we've got wards that we know have already have, they already have planned growth, and we're already over that number.
Yeah, we, we looked at that, you know, the map that I showed you earlier, we mapped out all the, the redevelopment, or development projects, including housing and multifamily, and, yeah, Ward three is just crazy, so probably at the next cycle, I won't be here, I hope, but, uh.
Neither will I.
We'll pass that on to someone else, and, and we might have to end up, you know, splitting Ward four and Ward three, you know, making future adjustments, so, that, and, you know, when we did it ten years ago, that was one of the considerations, we knew that, you know, Taberna and Carolina Colors and all that were going to take off, and we're not really sure how well they took off, but, you know, they have really grown, and that's a testament to you, if you look at the census data, Craven County and all the municipalities in it actually lost population, New Bern grew by almost seven percent, so that's a testament to the, the board and the, the staff that worked for you.
I have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
So, if we call for a public hearing for the next meeting, how will that work if me and Alderman Best need to, not, Bingle?
Yes, ma'am, it would be best if you could do that in the next week, so that we have a good seven days.
When you post the map?
Yes, ma'am, exact, exactly.
Okay.
The sooner the better, and to answer the mayor's question, the first deadline we have is November seventeenth, I would love to hit that deadline, that gives us a public hearing at the end of September, if everything is perfect, you can adopt the resolution with the new districts in October, if we need to have further discussion, we still have plenty of time in, in October, so we're, we're, we're on the trajectory to, to hit that deadline just fine.
Okay. Does the board will make a, do you wanna make a, do you wanna?
Let's do.
Motion for a public hearing?
Yes, sir.
I make a motion that we schedule a public hearing for our next meeting, which would be September, Madam Clerk, September.
Twenty-eighth.
Twenty-eighth at six P.M.
Second.
Motion and second, does everybody understand the motion? Any discussion? Let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Any other discussion on item number fifteen, Wardredistricting at this time? Let's go to item number sixteen.
Next item is consider a resolution to extend construction hours for J.H. Batten Design Builder at the U-Haul Project Site. U-Haul is building a new storage facility at forty-one thirty-four Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard. The city's noise ordinance prohibits construction beyond the hours of seven A.M. to nine P.M. without approval from the board. The construction superintendent finds it necessary to perform work, certain work such as drilling outside of these hours, and is requesting an exemption from the nor, noise ordinance. Additional information is attached in your packet, if you have any questions.
Scott, I think I asked you this on the New Bern Marketplace, but if, for some reason, there are some issues, we can always rescind this, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. Mayor, if you have any other questions, I'd like to make a motion, we adopt a resolution to extend construction hours for J.H. Batten Design Builder at the U-Haul Project Site.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing now, the second roll call starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number seven, carry.
Next item is consider a resolution approving an amendment to the covenant of use for two oh five First Street, the covenant of use between the city and the Economic Development Administration for the property of two oh five First Street is being amended to add approximately two and a half acres to the project. The initial covenant of use approved by the board in September twenty-seventeen did not accurately or fully describe all of the property that was intended to be designated. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, does the board have questions?
No.
No questions, and Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the amendment to the covenant of use for two oh five First Street.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing now, let's have a roll call starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
No.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eighteen.
Next item is consider a resolution approving the conveyance of property to religious community services. As discussed in the past, the city desires to transfer tax parcel ID eight dash zero zero four dash zero zero four, also known as nine twenty George Street and the curb market to RCS. RCS owns the adjacent parcel and can use this additional space in their operations. Backup information was emailed to you earlier today and is also available at your seats. If you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Does the board have questions?
Mayor, if the board doesn't have any questions, I'm so pleased to be able to make this motion, because this has been three years of, of work in trying to figure this out, and a little bit maybe even before then, but I wanna thank Scott Davis and his staff for helping us as well as Zeb Huff, who I see in the audience tonight, who is the Director of Religious Community Services.
Zeb, I hope that you use this building well in providing services to our community. You were the right group to have it, and I just see good things in the future, so thank you very much. With that said, I'd like to adopt a resolution approving the conveyance of tax parcel ID 8-004-004 to Religious Community Services.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. Zeb, I do want to mention that earlier Alderman Bingle mentioned Sister Parker. At that time, every time Sister Parker saw something that needed to be done, a gentleman by the name of Tommy Karum was right there making it happen. And Tommy, being very involved in home builders and the board of realtors here in New Bern, made a lot of things happen on that corner, and I just want to take this time to lift him up.
Yeah, absolutely. Recognize him, Lonnie Bridget. It was the home builders, the local home builders in New Bern, who all donated their services and whatever to make that building happen, so that there could be a soup kitchen there to feed our hungry.
So item number 18, if we're, any other discussion, we'll roll call with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Okay, item passes, item number 19.
Next item is consider a resolution declaring a 1999 Sutphen Aerial Platform a surplus property and authorizing electronic sale. The city owns a 1999 Sutphen Aerial Platform fire apparatus that is no longer needed. It's recommended that the apparatus be deemed surplus and sold via electronic auction. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have any questions?
I do. Mr. City Manager, will there be a minimum starting bid on that piece of equipment?
There will be. The minimum will be at $45,000.
Thank you.
And what do we do if we don't get $45,000? Do we donate it to a township or what? Let's plan.
Yeah.
We can, we can lower the minimum bid. If the board has recommendations on donation, we can address that at that time.
If there's no more comment, I do want to say, I'm somewhat, somewhat remiss to be voting for this, being that this is a 1999 model. The alternative is a retrofit, which probably was, what, over $200,000?
No, it's more than that.
I did speak with the, with the fire chief earlier today, and he informed me that it was approximately $600,000 for, for an outfit that would give approximately 10, 10 additional.
Well, that's, that's the, that was the main concern I had, was the number of years, extended life, so hypothetically, if you got 25 years out of it, you still uproot a 50-year-old fire truck, so I guess that's the way, the way it's going is, I have to default on my fire chief here to guide me on things like that.
And that, that price, if I'm not badly mistaken, would not, would not repair or replace the engine and transmission, correct? That's correct? Okay.
Yeah, I didn't mean to belabor it, it's just that, you know, you hate to, for what those things cost, you hate to take them out of service any earlier than you have to. Any other comments?
I'd like to make a motion, sir, that we adopt a resolution declaring a 1999 Sutphen Aerial Platform that was purchased by me as surplus property and authorize the electronic sale.
Second.
Second.
Do what?
You needed to second. I'm going to second.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second, is there further discussion? Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 20.
Next item is consider a resolution approving additional streetlights for Marbert Court. A resident has requested additional streetlights. Staff evaluated the request and determined the area does not meet the city's light standard and recommended the addition of two streetlights. The installation of those lights will cost $3,832.34, and the monthly utility charge for service will be $20.28 per light. Memo from Mr. Pichard is attached. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Board have questions?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution approving additional streetlights for Marbert Court.
Second.
Motion and second is a further discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 21.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
Would we be able to do 21, 22, 23, and just 21 through 23 together?
You can actually do 24, too.
24, okay. Could we do them all together?
Yes, you know, so go right ahead, if you will.
Oh, no, I just wanted to ask before you spoke, okay.
Is that a motion?
Oh, is that, yes, I'd like to make a motion that we do 21 through 24 all together.
Okay.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, is their discussion. Let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number 25.
Next item is consider an ordinance amending Chapter 70 Traffic and Vehicles to add Article 7 Golf Carts on Public Streets. Interest was expressed in allowing the operation of golf carts on public city streets with a speed limit of 35 miles per hour or less within the golf course communities of Carolina Colours, Taverna, and Greenbrier. The ordinance will amend Chapter 70 to add an article that will allow such operation and establish regulations, enforcement, and a civil penalty for violators. Operators will be required to have a current valid driver's license, a valid motor vehicle insurance policy for the golf cart, and specified safety features on the golf cart.
Mr. Mayor, we didn't go over what those five were. I was just asking if we could do them together, so I didn't know if people watching what these resolutions were in regards to amending the designation for agents for these different hurricanes. I didn't know if we wanted to say it, I just know we didn't say it.
Go ahead and reamount whatever you'd like to do.
No, the paragraph that the city manager used, it says, he didn't get a chance to say it.
Would you like, would you like me to discuss it? So basically, what all of those declarations are, those were done several years ago. The staff that were not, were there at the time are no longer here, so we're basically doing these declarations to add a senior accountant and the current city manager to all those declarations to allow us to be able to sign the appropriate paperwork.
Thank you. That's all I want to appreciate, too.
Okay. Let's go back to 25.
All right. And on 25, any questions you have on the, on the golf cart?
Well, I'm sure there'll be some. So, you know, right now, if a motorized car, truck, is unlicensed, uninsured, exceeding speed, et cetera, I, I guess there's a robust plan for action for abatement of such infractions. So are we going to also impose similar guidelines for protocol with respect to people riding golf carts? Are you going to be on offer on the sidewalks, or could somebody help me out a little bit more with that, how this is going to be enforced? Yes.
Scott, I apologize. I know you sent this to Alderman Aster and myself, and I reviewed the policy, but one thing that I failed to mention, I thought that we were going to enumerate the streets within Taverna, Carolina Colours, and Greenbrier as the only streets that this would be authorized on.
We did, but we described them by, by neighborhoods.
Okay.
The streets contained within the three golf course communities.
Okay.
Only.
All right. That way, if there's any changes within those neighborhoods, when there's new streets added, they would be.
Precisely, precisely.
Okay, I haven't given answers, so, but anyway, let's, whatever pleasure this board is.
Mayor, I'll just say, I've been on the board for almost eight years, and I've never had to complain about a golf cart to begin with in Greenbrier.
I expect you're going to be seeing a pro correction of them, though.
No, there's not going to be anywhere near as what we had when that press release went out saying is they couldn't do it. I mean, that's, that's when it, it got ugly for me. We had to adopt this ordinance to, to protect the guys that, and men and women that were in the golfing community to keep from getting tickets, but as soon as that press release went out saying it was against the law to do it, I probably received 30 phone calls in two days. You know, how am I going to get to my golf cart to the golf course now? So I welcome the ordinance now, it gives them some protection, and I'll make the motion that we adopt an ordinance amending Chapter 70 Traffic and Vehicles to add Article 7 Golf Carts on Public Streets. Second.
I just had a question, just for transparency. This will not affect if we have events like we did with Juneteenth, to be able to utilize them on, okay? Because it's special event.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Second.
Any other discussion on that item? Seeing none, let's have a roll call with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Aster?
Yes.
Alderwoman Harris?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, let's go to appointments, starting with Alderman Bingle.
None tonight, sir.
Alderwoman Harris?
None tonight, ma'am.
Alderman Aster?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
I do, sir. I'd like to appoint Mr. Tony Bryant to the H.P.C. board.
Second.
Motion and second is their discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Motion carries. Any other appointments tonight?
That is it, sir.
Okay. Alderman Best?
None.
Alderman Odom?
None tonight, sir.
Attorney, yes.
I know, okay.
Attorney's report?
Nothing to report, sir, Mayor.
City manager's report?
A few things to give you an update on. For, for several years, we have been talking about an introduction to the local government program. I'm happy to announce that we are starting up New Bern 101, which is basically open to the citizens. If you're 15 or older and want to find out more about what the city of New Bern does, what the departments do, we're going to offer a seven-week course. It will start literally at the end of this month, go for seven weeks. It'll be about two to two and a half hours each session, where we'll have department heads and staff, we'll meet with the citizens, they can ask questions, we'll talk about the budget process, what administration does, what each department does. We'll also have some of the elected officials come in and talk about things. The final night of this, participants will need to come to a board of Alderman meeting to participate in that as well. So it's a great opportunity for the citizens of our wonderful city to learn more about local government. There is an application process. Applications are available at City Hall. You can also go online to our website to get more information. And we're looking forward to this program. The goal is to be able to offer this at least two times a year, doing it in spring and fall, and we are excited about it.
And Foster, there is no charge for this.
There is no charge for this, that's correct.
Okay. What else do you have?
Okay, just want to give you a brief update on the American Rescue Plan funding. We, as you know, we have received approximately $3 million and change in our first allotment. We're expected to get $3 million and change more next year. We have to spend those funds by the end of 2024, so we've still got time. They're, they're still moving target in terms of what all of these funds can be used for. I think Tanya Harms and Kim Ostrom are going to be attending another workshop in October, where we have been promised that there's going to be some more guidance in terms of what we can spend these funds on. Now, we know we can spend it on water sewer infrastructure, broadband, and things like that, but we're, everyone, all the, all the communities throughout the country are looking for more guidance, and so we're, we're looking forward to getting that in October. Then we can come back to the board and have discussions on, on how the board would like to allocate these funds for what projects. Any other questions on that? All right, and the next thing is, we are getting ready to start up the Stanley White Recreation Center Advisory Committee again. As we know, we are going to be moving the recreation center over to the Third Avenue location. And also, we are about ready to release RFQs for, to rebuild the Stanley White Recreation Center. This is a female project, so that's federal funds that are involved with this, so we do have to meet minority and women, women business owner businesses criteria. So we will be reaching out. Lori Columbus is responsible for the purchasing part of this, so she will be making sure that we're dotting our i's and crossing our t's as we move forward in this process, so we're looking forward to this. There are really two types of ways we can move forward. One is with a construction manager at risk for a design build, and we're looking at doing the design build process, and if you have any questions about that, we're happy to answer anything you may have.
Well, I'm a proponent of the design build by engineer, where a builder has on staff or contractual arrangement with a engineer, architect, that they can readily get it stamped, sealed, where we can move on with the process. You know, it's anybody's guess between going out for the usual bidding of an architect, the arduous long process of getting those plans and then putting it out to bid with a contractor. If anybody's interested in getting a building built quick, I mean, not necessarily quick, but of similar quality, much faster, it would be a design build. And maybe, Mr. Davis, you could give the public a little bit more information on both?
Yes, sir.
Ideas and the timelines of, of the two.
Yes, sir. Option one is the traditional method. The city hires an architect, engineer, they design the building. That takes a great many months. Once the plan specifications are created, then the city would let the contract, seeking bids, to general contractors, who would then build the building consistent with the plans. Option two, the staff is recommending, is where a construction firm has their architect in-house. So both things happen at the same time. In this case, the committee that's been working on the project, and the board, you and the board have already blessed the general design of the shell, right? The spaces and the general look have, have been established, but what you have right now is not buildable. But a lot of the heavy lifting has already been done because the size and scale and general appearance has been established. So this would be an opportunity to, to maintain that momentum and find a firm that can design it and build it. What they also do, too, is they can, they can also do it in phases. They can design the foundation, start pouring the foundation while you're still designing other elements, so you can design and build at the same time to get the building done faster. Yes, ma'am?
In regards to doing a design to build, and if we decide to go that route, the city does not have any responsibility in regards to who they decide to hire to help build?
We do. We have, we have federal laws that govern the entire process.
Oh, okay, that's good.
Yes, ma'am. It's, we have, we have the state laws, and on top of that, we have the federal laws, under options one and two.
So say I'm the contractor that gets the bid to design and do everything. You still have a right to tell me who I'm going to hire to do the project? That's what I want an understanding on.
They are obligated to follow the federal, the contractors obligated to follow those federal guidelines.
Okay, and so whoever we do decide to get, we're obviously going to work closely with to fill that quota, to make sure that we're making sure that minorities and women are getting hired for this project, correct?
Yes, ma'am. Our contract with them requires them to follow those rules.
So it's stipulated.
We don't move pieces around the board, they have to see that the criteria is satisfied.
In fact, it's stated in RFQ, correct?
Yes, correct.
Is it possible, when it goes out, I can get a copy of that, just so I have it for my records?
Absolutely.
And, okay, the other question was about the advisory committee. What's going to be the responsibility they have moving forward? A few of the members had a few questions, so I just, for transparency and for people that are watching and listening, what's going to be the next steps that they're required to do? Because a few of them don't understand what they need to be doing moving forward.
So, so by ordinance, there were certain criteria that that board was established to do. Scott, you're probably going to have to help me with this off the top of my head. But one was gathering public input, which that was part of a process that's already occurred. Still accepting public input is absolutely fine as we move forward. Coming up with programs and activities that could be offered in that, in that facility, addressing the needs of Henderson Park, because we are going to be moving forward with doing some work on, on the park and upgrading that as well, especially with rebuilding the restrooms and adding some more play amenities there.
Fundraising to the extent that the committee wanted to take up any efforts to raise funds for special projects associated with the building.
Okay, and that committee will stay in effect until the ribbon cut in?
That will stay in effect until the building is built, yes, and so we have not met pending the outcome of the recreation center location. And so a meeting will be scheduled coming up, and we're going to basically get back on to the same schedule we were on, so it will be a monthly meeting until further notice.
Thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alderman, do you have a question?
Yeah, Scott, from a legal perspective, the Mini Brooks Act, how does that come into play when you compare? when you compare, uh, traditional architect, RFP or RFQ versus a design build? Is it the same rules that apply?
That's a good question. I don't have the answer to that. I don't have the answer to that.
Because I know that really restricts us. It's not the low bidder, it's other qualifications.
Precisely. Yeah, yeah. I, I, without looking at it, um, I would expect that the design build is, is a pure money, um, look and process, not what we're looking at qualifications.
Right.
But I'll get back to you.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Um, anybody else? Foster, I just wanted to let you know today, late this afternoon, I had a conversation with, um, some FEMA, Dot and Robert Ferguson, and, um, both of them said that this finished, everything is good, and you can proceed and just start submitting invoices whenever you have any.
Fantastic. And, and you know, I, I can't let this go on without saying, you know, three years ago today, Hurricane Florence hit New Bern. And so it's good to see that we're, we've, we've made tons of progress over the last three years of getting our city back to, back to normal as close as possible. And we're really excited about starting to work on the Stanley White Recreation Center and, and getting those programs going again and allowing the, the youth of our community to start exercising that space again.
Mr. Davis, would you want the direction of the board in the form of a motion? Or do you want the manager just to get direction?
Um, as to how to proceed with, um, I, I think he's got that direction unless there are any objections.
Well, I just want to make sure you're clear on what we want to do. We want to get a building built.
Yes, sir.
Understood.
Okay.
Uh, I have one last question. So when the, um, bidders come in, do we get to see that? Or who's going to, because I know that we're going to determine what, right? The board determines on who we're going to go with in regards to Stanley White?
So based on the, this will come back to the board, yes. It will come back to the board. Since, since this is over, I believe, $500,000.
Will the advisory committee have the ability to be a part of this process? Maybe questioning or talking to these individuals, or is that not how that process works?
Uh, it, it's not part of their purview based on ordinance. Staff traditionally will, will vet that, that information we'll get with public works and, and our city engineer and, and other departments to, to review that information.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anything else on the city manager's desk?
That's it for tonight.
It's good to do business with Alderman Bingle?
It is hard to believe that it's been three years. It seemed like yesterday, but it's been three years. It popped up on my memories today, my Facebook memories all day. I kept seeing flashes of the water all around New Bern. And, um, it was funny. I traveled to New York this past weekend, and my hometown suffered the flooding fate of, uh, Ida that just came through. So as I went down the streets of the neighborhood, what did I see but what I saw three years ago? And just sidewalks piled with wet insulation and people's lives on the corners. And I thought, you know, I, I just didn't realize it could come back again. But I feel very sorry for people up there. It's a whole lot different because a lot of people live in basement apartments. Therefore, a lot of people, some people actually lost their lives because they couldn't get out of the basement. Um, but with that being said, I have two things to speak to tonight. Um, I have, um, talked with the city attorney and, um, about our surplus property and how we do that. So, um, currently, anything that the city owns, that surplus that's owned by the city or the city and county, it's on a list that's been put together by Development Services. It is on our, uh, website, and we really haven't updated. I've asked some questions because I've had some questions asked of me about property for sale. And my response is, I'm sure all of ours would be, is go see the city clerk, and the city clerk can handle it for you. Well, I found out that the piece of property they could not offer, make an offer on it because it wasn't on our quote-unquote surplus list. I wasn't aware of this, so I spoke with the city manager, uh, excuse me, with the city attorney, and he said that we, it hasn't been updated since maybe 17 or 16?
Yes, ma'am.
Somewhere in there. So, um, I just would like to put this before the board. If it's okay to give direction to the city manager to start that process so we can go ahead and put, put this list together. So there's individuals out there that would like to make some, some bids on property or potentially purchase property, they can. So, uh, is the board okay with me asking to move forward on this? I just think it's good.
To get an updated list?
Yeah, to, to get a, put new properties that may not be on the list already and open that up for additional properties we may have.
And that'd be provided to the board for us to see as well?
Yeah.
The board will, will review it.
Thank you. I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Okay. Um, and then the next that I have on my list, Charlie. Uh, they're getting ahead of me on this one. So, um, I, I reviewed recently all the lighting requests that we have gotten, especially in the Duffy Field area, and realizing that lighting is really a problem in that neighborhood and has been a problem for years. Um, and it covers myself, Alderman Harris, and Alderman, um, Best, Ward, and we're constantly asking for light upgrades. Would it be possible for you to do an assessment of the total boundary of that instead of picking off one here and one there and one there and come back to us and say, "Look, we have assessed this neighborhood and this area, and we need lighting here, here, and there, and let's just do it in one fell swoop"? I just feel like that would be a better, a better way to do it than picking off one by one because sometimes we know about it, sometimes we don't know about it. And this way, we could give attention to that area that, that really probably could use some additional light. So would that be like the worst thing I could ask you to do?
Probably.
Is that a lot of work on staff, or?
It, it's certainly feasible to, to do it in, in larger blocks. Um, I, I would, um, like to make you aware that I, I receive as many complaints, um, against lighting and for light pollution, um, that I do, or more of them. So I, I would suggest that you let the market drive it and let the citizens make those requests, and we'll respond to those requests.
Well, I think I'd still like to see the study just for the fact we don't have to say, "Light it up", but I think if, if we could see what, in your professional estimation, is a dimly lit area, that maybe we could work, you know, with the neighbors or whatever. I just feel that we need to go ahead. I think it would be better to be proactive than reactive as harsh street lights in this neighborhood. Um, and the rest of the board may have a different feeling on that, but I think it would be good to be proactive.
Well, Alderman Bingle, the only, um, the only concern that I have is that, as, uh, Mr. Bouchard said, there may be ci- some of our citizens that don't want the, the extra lighting. Um, and I always bring forth, if there's, uh, requests from one of my constituents within the community, if they request them for to have a light in, that's when I bring it forth.
I guess I feel like I, you need to know the dimly lit areas because.
We tried this. We tried this 25 years ago and went out and started surveying and then started putting lights up and everywhere that the, um, I think it was probably Willard Bedwell or whatever his name was, was the director of public. And, and we were receiving phone calls of, of complaints because there's too much lighting. I'm telling you, if there's not enough light in the community, this, this citizen's going to call. They're going to call. Uh, we, we changed out some lights over in my neighborhood and went from whatever those orangey colored lights are to the LED lights, and I received complaints about that because they're so bright.
My concern is that I'm hearing, um, in a lot of cases, that, that the area that I'm speaking to, um, they're, they're concerned because it is dark. They're concerned for safety. There's some elderly people that are concerned about the safety of the area because it is dark. They're not willing to say, "I want a light right in front of my house" or whatever, but, but the area. So I thought it would be a good practice if we could just know, we don't have to install anything.
Well, maybe that's a, maybe that's a target in the area that you've gotten those complaints from.
Well, it, it's, it's.
But you've got complaints, and I think we should definitely look into it.
Just for a matter of safety.
I guess that'd remind us all that there's two parts to this evaluation process. First is, uh, street lighting is designed for the roadways, and we evaluate on roadway standards. If they don't satisfy, if they satisfy the roadway standard, meaning there's enough light there, then it goes to public safety, and the police department, um, makes an opinion on whether or not there's a safety issue.
Does sometime the police department come to you and not a citizen, and the police department will say, "We think there should be more light in here"? Does that ever happen?
I don't think I've ever had that request from the police department.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. That's it, sir. That's all.
Alderman Harris?
Yes. Um, Mr. George, we had a meeting, um, a Primbrook meeting, uh, yesterday, and we discussed a few things with, um, some of the members in the community. Um, and one of their concerns was, um, Trent, is it Trent Road or Trent Drive?
Trent Street.
Trent Street. Um, it's a road that was, um, inherited, and it doesn't have asphalt on it. Um, and George did, um, get, got some information. It would be $90,000 to give it asphalt and not have the millings on it. And so I wanted to know, um, how we can go about providing that for the community. Um, their, their concern is that, you know, they, they would like their area to be beautified as well. Um, you know, in the history of this position in Ward 2, there's been a lot of things that have been said that was going to go on in Primbrook, and they haven't seen that. So they're, they said they're very patient and they're willing to work, but we would like to kind of phase in, you know, getting streets put in, looking at how we're going to rectify the ditching, and, um, this would be kind of as a good faith. I know that we, um, allocated money earlier this year to complete that, that, um, road on Old Country, um, Old Country Road? I can't say it.
Country Club.
Yeah, Country Club, um, road to the part where you would go into Trent Woods. Um, but I have visited this, this street that's over in Primbrook. Um, and when it rains, it's not a good site, and I would really appreciate if the board can support the Primbrook community and allocate funds to get this road, um, get some asphalt in there, um, and make it permanent.
Did, did you say it was a dirt road or gravel road?
George can speak to it. I apologize.
The section of road that we're speaking of is Trent, is, um, is Trent Street, and it's between Pembroke Avenue and McKinley. And it was an undeveloped right-of-way. It was platted as right-of-way. It was just undeveloped. Road was never built. Uh, historically, the area has been used for the residents along that street as a driveway. They had had gravel down. It was requested last year, um, due to some dust concerns with the gravel, if we could do something. So we went in there and put asphalt millings that we have up in our facility on it and put the roller over. We did not widen it. We did not improve the subgrain. We just tried to do something to control the dust for the residents. Um, Alderwoman Harris asked that, that we go take a look at it and get a budgetary construction number to build 335 feet of road through there. So we basically built a, have to build a new section of roadway.
Who owns it?
It's, it's a platted city right-of-way.
A platted city right-of-way but not a street?
It's a street. For the public use, yeah.
So why, when did we acquire that? Why would we have taken a street over that's not a street?
We, uh, we annexed that in the early 90s, that whole area, and we took it as we got it. So there were streets that were not constructed back in the day.
That's probably not the only one.
No, there, there's several in Pembroke. There, there's some, um, on, uh, Park Avenue that, that run along that section there. You find those in some of the older neighborhoods, just.
Well, that was my, the reason I was asked is, is my concern, because we've been approached by developers that want to build a house, but the street is not developed. And our response to them is that the city doesn't build streets, developers do.
Correct. Correct.
Well, is there any residents that live on this street?
There are residents after that backup to it. I believe two of the, two or three of the residential structures used it for a back driveway.
So there's no houses on, there's no houses on the street?
Yes, ma'am. There are.
The front of the houses?
Uh, no, the front, the fronts, um, I believe, front the other streets, yes.
There's no address to it. I think what you're saying, there's no address to that Trent Street. No addresses.
Well, you're, what's your opinion as public works center director?
Um, I, I'm leery of going down this path just as what Alderman Odom said, that it has not been our policy historically to construct roads. Um, and this.
And, 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 uh, undedicated. I mean, like.
Yeah, just undeveloped right-of-ways. Just because it was platted 50 years ago, it's not been built.
This is dedicated.
Right.
Right. Ownership of the city, New Bern. This is not a private developer. It hasn't, that at some point is going to, is going to grant it to the city, and then it become a, a city right-of-way. So this is city right-of-way that's not approved. And I do note that back in that time period, Mr. Davis, there were some of those streets that were private that even, there's question as to should they have been paved because they, I think there was a question, were not the city owned the right-of-way? Uh, this is one where we do own the right-of-way, right?
Yes, sir.
And so I don't know why, if we have a public dedicated right-of-way, um, that wouldn't be paved on sale.
We have a lot of it.
Sir?
We have a lot. And that's, and that's been the policy, that it's kind of an all or nothing.
Why do you think that? I don't know if that got paid with community block money or what, uh, at the time, but there was a big paving process over there when it was annexed into the city. So I don't know how that got missed, but do you? Well, we, we just paved the main roads that there were, that were being used. I mean, this sounds like it's a, I mean, it sounds like it's a backdoor driveway, correct?
It's more or less been a, been a back driveway for these.
I mean, and, and there's, there's probably quite a few of them like that in that community.
There may be a, maybe, and, and I know probably at least a half a dozen in Pembroke that are, you know, still wooded with, with adjacent lots.
Have we been maintaining them with, with gravel?
Um, that, that driveway, we did it because of dust concern for the existing residents that abut it. And I believe there have been times that GFL or our route trucks had picked up on that road. Um, and it was already cleared. It was already a gravel road. We did not widen it or improve it any other than put down millings that we had from a prior job on it to try to control the dust.
Well.
Well, if, if you, if you going, if you're going to, uh, by the direction of this board, of course, but if you're going to do that area, then I feel like there's other areas in the city that needs to be done as well. And I can say the same for my area, which is East and West Pleasant Hill. And I brought that to the board back in 2017, if I'm not mistaken, and, and nothing has been done with it. So I think, you know, we got taxpayer and citizens that live in these communities, and we got streets that the city maintains streets, um, or not streets, but ungravel, I mean, unpaved streets, and we need to address that issue.
Maybe it's time, maybe it's time that we get a list of all of the unimproved roads that are city roads, and let's look at it as a whole, possibly as a bond, or start moving them towards in the, the budget years. But just to say we're going to pick one out and, and pave it right now, especially at $90,000, how much money did you get this year for paving?
400. But that, 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 that number includes, we would have to do a complete subgrain. I mean, it's just like we're building a new road. We've got the undertow.
I, I would like to just see a complete list of all the roads and, and the number of residents that live on that that has a physical addresses on these roads. And, and let's look at maybe, like, when we go through the bond, doing a bond, our next budget year, we can start including these roads.
Oh, well, um, I appreciate anything. I'm going to your office. Yeah, exactly. Well, George, um, at this point, I would appreciate it because if, if you could put some of that, did you say milling?
Milling, asphalt milling.
Which is, which is no cost to the city, correct?
No, we, we, we receive it back usually when we, when we do our paving.
Mr. Five?
If, if, um, if that could be addressed to East and West Pleasant Hill, to in, to include that area for the milling? Because we, I have residents that lives on that dirt road.
Yes, ma'am. We, we can certainly look at that.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
My, my concern is that, um, I understand we need to get a list. But again, like I've said, if you go through the history, Primbrook has not gotten a lot of things in their community. And I think this is a, a good faith effort to kind of move forward. It's unfortunate that this road has not been, um, built the way that it need to when it was inherited or, um, but they have a right to make sure that there are streets and, and, and sidewalks and things in their community, like every other community. So I understand that the ticket price is $90,000, but it's, it's a start to moving forward to rectify the situation and issues of having, um, streets, roads, dirt roads that have not been paved. And I don't think it's fair to the Primbrook community that they should be put on hold or put to the side so we can research and figure out all of the roads and do a bond. I think we have enough funds in, in the, um, general fund to be able to allocate $90,000 more this year to get that road built and paved out.
For a backyard driveway?
But it's, it's not. They, I mean, if you probably, I mean, I would hate to add extra work onto, um, you know, our staff, but it's, it's. you know, our staff, but it's, it's used as, as a regular street, I mean.
I mean, I'm all in favor of let's see how many we have and just group them together and, and try to do them all under, you know, at one time, or half of them this year, half, or next year, half of them the year after, or something like that. But to, without a list of, I mean, we may have other roads. I can tell you this, if you do this road, you're gonna have others in that community and other communities like Barbara's, that's gonna be calling saying, hey, you know, I live on this street, it's not a backdoor driveway and I, I want it fixed. So I would, I would rather see a list first.
I completely understand that. I just feel like no matter what we do, just like with the lights, some may want it, some may not. We're here today and this is what's the topic and being discussed. I understand that there are a lot of unpaid roads. But again, they just received the ability to be able to get a complete road for walking from the vault center all the way going down to the Trent Wood community. This is a road, a street that is in the community. They still have major flooding issues. They don't have sidewalks and there's a lot of communities that do have sidewalks. So for us to be able to pave a road that we took on as a responsibility, regardless if it was developed or not, it should be developed. If weren't other communities, all other communities that I'm aware of, they, they do have developed roads. This was a request, I, I do think it's feasible. I'm just asking the board to support. And then also in that, with light of this, do the research, get all of the other streets and then move forward with that idea of allocating more money next year and the year before, the next year for paving. But paving has been a big thing and people's cars is getting tore up. You have to go put the millings in and when it's raining, hurricanes, flooding, there's issues on that road. I physically went there and saw it. So I just, I, I think we can afford to, to make this a, a completed street. And I'm, I mean, I would like the board to give direction to be able to do that or.
Alma Best.
Um, Ma Harris, I agree with you. I feel that there should not be not one dirt road in this city limits. But I really would like to have a list of the dirt roads and especially take the, the citizens that, that's their main entrance and exit to their home is the front door. Those streets, I think, should take precedence over being paved first than a back street. You see, I understand what I'm saying?
I do, I just don't agree. I understand that there's a process. I just think that this was brought to the board at this time. It is a concern, it's been researched, the amount is there. It is, it, it doesn't matter if they use it as a front or a back. They're taxpayer citizens and they deserve to have a road that the city owns to be an actual road and not a dirt road. So when we utilize that sentence, that it, we're utilizing taxpayer dollars, Pembroke is a community that is a part of the city and they pay taxes and they deserve to be able to have these amenities and the beautification and not have to beg for it. So again, like I said, I would really appreciate, we have a great fund balance. If we can allocate more money for them to be able to turn this into a, a road and build it out the way that it needs to be.
Again, I agree with you, but I think, I brought this to the board, I think it was in twenty seventeen. And my citizens need a front door entrance, a road, a paved road, not a dirt road with dust flying every time they enter and exit. So if, you know, I think, I agree with you. But if, if we, if you're gonna make a motion on this or ask for a motion or whatever on this, I think that those taxpayer citizens, again, as you said, that need this entrance for their front doors should take precedence over back doors. And I think all of them should be included, all dirt roads should be paved at some point in time.
I agree. Mr. City Manager, can we get the list put together of the, the roads? How long each one of them is? At some point in time, we're gonna need to project the cost. And how many residents are addressed on that road at some point in time?
Yes, we can.
I think that would be very helpful. That way we'll have a, an overall picture of, of what we need to do.
I agree, there shouldn't be dirt roads, but there, yeah, we have them. And so we need to start working towards fixing them.
To add to what you said, Alderman, Aster. I think in the last year or two, Mr. Davis, we've undedicated a road over there. We undedicated one, I believe.
We closed one in Pembroke?
Well, it was, I believe, right there near Country Club Road. What I'm saying is that when you're doing this, this research, I think staff should look, if there are anomaly situations where a road maybe should be just undedicated, that does serve a purpose.
Yes, sir.
If we could take some of them out of the inventory, that, that would be less money spent.
And not turn it back over to the property owners?
Yes, it serves no purpose.
Well, when, when we close a street, first rule is we cannot landlock any lot. So it's pretty rare that we can close a street. But when we can close a street, the adjoining owners then own out into the old street to the middle, to the center line. So we can sort of look at that in the process.
Well, there's, there's, if I'm not badly mistaken, there's probably quite a few of them over there in the Pembroke community that are, are unapproved. I mean, they're wood.
That's right.
Whereas dedicated streets, those are the ones we need to look at too. And let's just abandon them and turn them back over to the property owners.
We can't landlock the center, that's, that's what I'm saying, is you can't, you can't close a block and landlock.
Well, the ones that we can, is why.
Sure, yes, sir.
I think smoke, one, one, what was, what was the deal? Didn't we not undedicate a street there?
Yeah, well, part of the street. Oftentimes, we'll just close a little, a little terminus of a street that doesn't landlock anyone.
Right, that never, never intended to landlock anybody.
Yes, yes.
Do we speak to the property owners when we decide to do this? Is that something that happens where we just undedicate a road?
We, we will research it first. Off, off the top of my head, I can't think of any examples where we would close a street without landlocking a lot. Most of the time you do, which is why you can't.
Gotcha.
Anything else?
Um, so with the, the road over in Pembroke, so we're moving to doing research? And then how soon will we have that information back to make some decisions? Because Pembroke would like to have paved roads and streets and sidewalks.
That, that will take some time. Lots of these areas were platted in the forties, fifties, some in the twenties for us to identify. Um, I think the best use is gonna be GIS to initially identify them and then we can get a list. And if we need to in-depth look at individual areas, I think that's probably the best way to do it.
One month, two months?
Uh, probably four weeks. I think four weeks to get an initial list that, that'll give us an overall look at it.
Sounds good. I appreciate that, George, thank you for all that you do.
Anything else?
That's it, thank you.
Don't go away, George.
Alderman, Aster.
Hey, I listened to Mr. Fife tonight talk about his ditch beside his business. Can you give us an update? Have you been out and looked at it and can you tell us what's going on there?
Yes, and, and there's, there's, I've met with Mr. Fife, City Manager and I've been. I've had our consultants out there on three different occasions. We have looked at his concerns and the consultants have had their engineers and geologists down to look at it. And they're preparing a report on that ditch and the effects if it is having any on his building. And I should have that within the week to be able to bring back to you with that information.
Did, was that part of the, any part of his ditch, part of the cat egg or cat?
Yes, it was, yes, it was part of, yes.
And as a result of the cleanout, is that's when we started noticing the bank failing?
I'm, I'm gonna let the consultant report come to those conclusions.
Okay. All right, so we've got someone looking at it, Mr. Fife, and we're gonna have a report back shortly. And I'm sure that we'll be sharing that with you and getting with you. But we'll do whatever we can. If it's our problem, we'll fix it, okay?
George, oh, well with that, when the information comes back, will you be able to CC me on that since Mr. Fife is in?
Certainly, I'll make it available, yes.
Thank you.
And one more thing, George, you and, and Jeff and of course the city attorney, I want to thank you for my request about Betty Grisham Lane.
Yes.
And being blocked off. And it's my understanding, although I didn't ride down there this afternoon, but it's my understanding that this afternoon, that that road will be opened up for public use starting some, sometime today. They were supposed to take the barricades down, correct?
That's correct.
Thank you very much for taking care of that. And Jeff, you too, thank you. That's all, thank you.
Alma, Kim.
I don't have anything tonight, sir.
Alma Best.
Yes, I just have a question. I know we set a date for our first public hearing, September twenty-eighth, for redistricting. I just want to ask if that we, we can have a larger facility for that particular public hearing, I mean, public meeting, so that we can have maps and stuff available so that the citizens can come and look at those maps or at least have a larger building than having it here at City Hall. I, I don't know how y'all feel about that, but I just wanted to. We didn't discuss where, you know, where we were gonna hold that public hearing at. I mean, uh, public, um.
Would we be able to get the maps on, online early enough that anybody that wanted to look at them could look at them?
That's my recommendation, is to make sure we have at least a week with those maps up online. And as just mentioned, City Manager, if we can do some hard copies, maybe at the rec center, try to get them around so that people can have access to them that might not have internet access.
Yes, Facebook, social media. Is, is it possible that we can have them blown up and maybe down in the conference room for people to kind of come in and check it out that way as well?
Okay, are you saying conference room here?
Downstairs for them to, on their lunch break or whatever, they're able to physically view it?
Maybe even in the front area where they come in, the entrance way.
That's what I'm saying, downstairs conference room.
Yeah, we're not, so they don't have to go in there and they don't have anybody sitting at the desk.
Oh, okay.
Maybe in the entrance way.
Having a board, yeah.
Sitting on easel.
And then individuals there are preferably in color.
I, I think we just need a larger space for, my concern is with, you have a flux of people in a, in a room and we're still going through this COVID stuff. And that's my concerns.
Oh, I understand what you're saying, I agree. We need to have a bigger location in support of that. I'm just saying beforehand, so citizens can do their due diligence, is like they said, they'll put it out on social media, be online and be printed, but for them to physically come to City Hall on Monday through Friday and see a map and physically see it, I think that would be a great opportunity for the citizens as well.
Okay, can you do that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So do you have a, a suggestion of where we're gonna have this public hearing?
This will be our meeting too, a public hearing, it'll be part of our meeting.
Exactly.
I think if we put them online and give enough public notice that where some of the places they're located, I, I mean, I don't see a ton of people jumping out here to come to that meeting anyway. I mean, we had nobody to speak during our budget meeting.
You, you can't speculate and say that because you might.
Well, like I said, I don't think.
Well, you might, as an individual, as a taxpayer and citizen, I might want to be at that particular meeting that night to ask the Alderman questions about that particular map. Of that particular map area.
If we post it long enough, then, and they can call you and ask you about it. And then you can express their concerns.
But Foster, do you have a problem with having this meeting at, at West New Bern Rec Center where you can have these maps available for citizens?
We could do the meeting at the West New Bern Recreation Center if it was the pleasure of the board.
Exactly.
But just to give you an idea, this room right now is bigger than the room we use at West New Bern Recreation Center. We could put it in the gym, but then we'll have acoustic issues during that meeting. If you'd like, we could reach out to the Community College, which is, has a bigger space to see if they have availability as well. Regardless, if, if, if you want to keep the meeting here, we can definitely put maps all throughout this building, upstairs, downstairs as well to make it accessible. We can also put some maps over at the library for better access. We can put them at any of our other public facilities as well to give the public an opportunity to review that.
Thank you.
Will it be able to go on CTV three? Because I'm just concerned, you know, this is a, you know, an important decision that we're gonna make as a board for this term. And this stays for ten years. And so we do need everybody that is watching, listening, paying attention to have public input because this will last for ten years. If we can have it on the, the TV and, because there's some, I don't know if we can put it in the Sun Journal, but there are some people that just don't do social media or TV and they do their newspapers. And then there's some people that it's easily accessible and need different locations. And then we have people that, due to the pandemic, they probably still don't want to come outside. So I think if we can just hit all avenues when we do have this public hearing and decide to move forward with whatever the map is gonna be, that we did our complete due diligence, were completely transparent and made that decision. So I think if we can add that as well, I think that would be a great opportunity.
Alma Best, you have the floor here, so it's, it's, what is your proposal?
Well, it's basically up to the board, but I'd just like to have a larger facility available to the public.
And what is that facility?
Well, the only larger building, but Mr. Hughes, you said the gym at West New Bern, acoustics issue, so I guess that.
Greatland Community College?
Um, that was just as, to me, it was somewhat just as, the acoustics there was a little off as well, but it's a larger facility.
Well, do we still do offer overflow here, correct? Do we still offer the overflow process here and there, possibly downstairs, I'm not sure.
But, you know, again, I think it's important if we have it at the West New Bern Rec Center, we have it in all of our public, maybe where people pay the light bill. There could be some information there, areas that they can access on TV three.
I think the big posters in these, all the locations that people go to, physical of previous, new, and then the individual paper, I think that will, will be very helpful as well. And then if there are any citizens that have concerns and may need a special delivery, inbox me and I'll deliver them to your house if you need them.
We can also ask Colleen to do a press release on Channel Twelve and just let people know where these maps can be, you know, looked at.
Alma, I have two.
Question for Alice. Whenever you do the proposed changes, is there a way that the computer can generate a list of all the residential addresses that's affected by these potential changes?
Yes.
So we could easily send a postcard, because we're not talking about a lot. We could send a postcard to those residents that are affected. Because I know the Board of Elections will do that if there's a change in polling place. Just send a postcard, something very simple to say, your proposed residence is subject to potentially change representation for your Alderman. Here's a link, here's the public hearing, here's where it's gonna be and get that information out. Could we do that fairly easily?
Fairly, I, I would say like the Ward Three change is probably the most significant. There's a lot of folks that live there. I will say when we did it ten years ago, we had public meetings that were not board meetings. They were just general meetings that we, you know, at different places like Stanley White or West New Bern Rec Center, where myself and other people were there to answer questions and we had the big maps up.
I think that's a great idea.
But there was, were significant Ward changes back then than there are this time.
What was the participation when you had those meetings ten years ago?
In certain areas, pretty, pretty heavy, but there were, again, significant changes ten years ago than versus this, this town. I had, we've, you know, had discussions and I have not received any calls or concerns. Back then, I had a lot of calls and questions and people coming in and looking. So I've, I've not had anyone shown any interest yet.
The changes are so slight this time, I agree with her, you know. Going through the last change, it really significantly changed how, you know, back ten years ago, the third Ward that, where that was, Carolina Colors and all of that, that was four different wards, all in that segment. So you really talk about changes, it really, it really changed that.
This, this proposal really kind of clears, clears up a lot of changes that we made ten years ago. And like I said, there were significant changes. And we had several public meetings and we had, probably the one we had at West New Bern Center was probably the most. And at Stanley White, we had a lot of folks that showed up there because there were a lot of changes in those areas. We could certainly do something at West New Bern. I'm happy to go there, put up some maps and answer any questions. I have my laptop and, you know, full of information, I'd be happy to do that.
So, so Alice, how, how in-depth would that be for you to get? Just as Alderman Odom said, you know, it's, we just, we don't have as much changes as we did ten years ago. To get cards or postcards or letters or something out to the individuals that the change is going to affect?
It's not hard to get the addresses, it is pretty significant amount of population though, I think, in those areas. You're talking about Old Town, all the Country Club area, the Ghent area. There are just significant areas that have a lot of population.
I would be concerned that we have just two weeks by the time we got all that together, try to send it out.
Yeah, because of that, probably we'd be able to get out to the mail and stuff. I think providing all of the locations people are watching, as long as we do our due diligence, have board members to let individuals know where they can pick their stuff up, having those oversized maps, I think that will suffice enough. And again, like the city attorney said, we have to have more meetings with more concerns. We still have time allotted to that. So I think that we will be in good shape come our next meeting. But just make sure that we get all of it out and put it on all of the platforms that we have so that people are aware of the changes and what's going on.
Well, we could certainly put some out online very quickly, so that's not a big deal.
Thank you.
Alice, can you also just, you know, just maybe put some maps at, like you said, at West New Bern, at the Omega Center, or the Pembroke Community Center, or whatever, just have the maps there, and then we don't really have to worry about getting a bigger facility to hold the public hearing?
Somebody like Pembroke, none of that has changed. That will remain in the same ward as it is currently, you know, Pleasant Hill will...
Well, just giving that as an example, I mean, whatever the changes.
I understand, but maybe we just go to the areas that have impact or have change.
Okay, anything else?
That's it for me.
Alderman Odom?
Nothing tonight, sir.
Do we need a closed session tonight?
No, sir.
Is there any further business to come for the movement board of aldermen at this time?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion second, any discussion, all in favor of motion, say aye. All in favor, say a motion carries.